Okay, good evening, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. It's the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, June 6th, for first a regular meeting and then hopefully a public hearing. We have four postponements this evening. Item three, which is for Chesmar Road for a final subdivision at that address in the R7 Zone. Item four, DNF Holdings for a final subdivision at 137 Dublin Road in the RA1 Zone. Item seven, for a final site plan and special permit at 240 Greenwich Avenue, and the applicant is 240 GALLC. Item eight A, Jonathan Weiner Trustee for a pre-application at 58 Don Harbour Lane to change some conditions of non-development that were placed on the original approval at that site. And with that, all of our regular members are here this evening, and we will begin the meeting with our first item, which we have been combining with the second item, as we did so the last time we heard it. That's the Town of Greenwich for a municipal improvement to renew the lease agreement with the Greenwich Arts Council at 299 Greenwich Avenue, along with the final site plan for that same application. For this, Madam Jenkins will be seated for Mr. Levy. Will continue to be seated for Mr. Levy, who is moving his camera way more than my dizziness can handle. And good evening, Mr. Branion.
Thanks for having me back.
Okay, so we talked a lot about this yesterday, and we're still on this. We've got the history now. Patrick, do you want to just summarize this, or is Mr. Branion completely in on the history?
I will defer to Ben if he wants to speak, but I can go through it if you'd like.
It's all you, Pat.
So the commission last saw this lease in 2010. There was a decision obviously rendered. Post that decision, the RTM and the town took a long look at the lease agreements that they have and the process or the policies related to that, and did a study about those. And so the leases were year to year. There were temporary leases going on for until the until 2014, when the policy was established and the leases were signed. It appears that not all the language in the commission's decision was incorporated into that document, but it's back now. It's been 10 years. The specific language is related to school uses and for-profit uses being subleased out. And now the current construct has, doesn't have those preclusions in it, but there is language in there related to subleases of the space that the Arts Council is, excuse me, the Alliance is looking to rent would be limited to those who are members of the organization. So there is a acknowledgement that it has to be oriented with the Greenwich Arts Alliance. Am I missing any steps there, Ben?
No.
Okay, so based on that, the commission discussed it yesterday, but as you know, Mr. Branion, we can't reach any kind of decision at the briefing. Would the commission like to offer some thoughts and comments at this time?
Any, any-
So Nick first, since he started talking, and then Mary. Go ahead.
Any, any sub-rent, if you would, of the Arts Alliance basically has to be a member of the Alliance. I think I'd like to know, what does that mean? Do they need to do they pay dues? What do they actually have to do to be a member? Because that may be a solution to this, is that they're part of the group that's leasing from the town. I don't know, Ben, if you can answer that, or if we have any detail on that?
My understanding is it is a membership due-based arrangement. I was trying to see if the executive director has joined as an attendee, but I'm not seeing
No.
Tatiana listed.
No.
That's my understanding. It is a dues-based process.
Ms. Jenkins? While Mr. Mackry is thinking?
Yes, I was going to say, we've seen draft lease agreements with five organizations, but there's also hour-to-hourly arrangements, and perhaps we don't have quite as much information about those arrangements. In 2010-
Recording in progress.
In 2010, there was a recommendation made that the subleases actually agree to conform to regulations and be not-for-profits. And that language is not currently in lease agreements between the Arts Council and their subleases. And I'm not troubled by that, except we did make, we, the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2010 made recommendations as an advisor, and those were not included. And I'm not, I'm not troubled by it, except to the extent that that continues to be something that's discussed.
Could you elaborate, Ms. Jenkins? Uh, Mary?
Oh, yeah. It seems to me that it would, it would be helpful to have language, both in the agreement between the town and the council, and between the council and its subleases, that specifically addressed the modifications that were suggested in 2010. And that would include language to the effect that subleases will be not-for-profit corporations, unless there is some other alternative to that language, and that they agree to use the premises in conformity with zoning regulations and other applicable regulations.
Mr. Branion?
What I discovered when I did the research here is this subleasing issue is one of the main catalysts for the work that the RTM did on the recommendations for the lease. I think anything we could provide clarity on this, I think both the town and, if I can speak for the Arts Council, they'll be open to it because they like the arrangement of using the facility. Just going forward, any clarity that we need. When I look through the document, there's a couple of things the town needs to make sure is being enforced in those rental agreements is, as the language suggests, should be presented to the Board of Selectmen. And that's a process that's, that I don't believe has occurred, but certainly will going forward when the new lease is executed.
Okay. Again, I don't have a particular problem with it, except to the extent that it keeps generating discussions every time the lease is-
No, absolutely.
Make it easier.
Well said.
Thank you, Ben.
So how would we follow up on that? Because that was quite an exercise, you know, always the problem, finding all the little pieces and putting them together and knowing what everybody did a million years ago. Could we ask that, could we condition it? Oh, you can't condition it, am I? But we can-
Condition the site plan.
I got there. I got there. I had to think a nanosecond. So we could condition the site plan, and we could just ask that the agreement between the Arts Council and its subleases, a copy of it be submitted to P&amp;Z when executed? And then we have it in the record for when they come back, and we'll know what everybody agreed to and what is supposed to be happening, and we won't be, we won't have to take two meetings to do it. We'll all just know. Does that work?
And it's just for our record going forward, so in 10 years, when they come back, we know what's going on and what has gone on?
Yes. Because, because from what we've gathered, there's no, so just from a zoning point of view, there's no violation. And the town has come to a decision that it's okay to have renters of the council that are for profit. And therefore, if they just give us what those terms are and that, you know, that they have to belong to the whatever they put in, that they just give it to us, so that we don't stumble on this again, and we know what the history is. Part of that, Mr. Branion, is that when we have a non-town applicant, we need to be consistent, as you know. Okay. So anything else from you guys? Do you think we could move forward to closing these items and making a decision?
I think we could do the MI. I think we can try to slog through the site and make sure we get all the bits and pieces included.
Okay. On that basis, does anybody object to closing this item at this time? Again, the seated people are Albin, Mackry, Jenkins for Levy, Low and Jeski. Does anybody object? These two, these two applications are hereby closed. Therefore, Mr. Secretary, do the easy one first.
Okay, let me make sure I've got all my bits here. Okay, this is a municipal improvement lease extension at 299 Greenwich Avenue, PLPZ 2023. 165, where's the office of First Selectment is requesting MI to extend the lease between the Town of Greenwich and the Greenwich Arts Council Incorporated. The original lease had a start date of 10/21/80 and renewed by the Planning and Zoning on 10/12/10, and the RTM approved the lease in 2014. Greenwich Arts Council Proposed DC is seeking to extend their lease of second and third floors for an additional 10 years. And if any of the Board of Selectmen on 4/13/23, they voted to approve for of the MI to P&amp;Z in accordance with Section 699A 2 of the Town Charter. And as indicated in the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development, the proposal is consistent with Guiding Principles 5.5B and C. Therefore, motion to grant municipal improvement status in accordance with Section 699A2 of the Town of Greenwich. As requested, the lease will be extended to June 6, 2034, with a possible extension for an additional 10 years. And the commission shall review any lease extensions prior to presentation to Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second? Tom, de Tom, de Tom.
Second.
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Mackry?
Aye.
Mr. Jeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes 5-0, and we go to the site plan. And I think, Mary, you would be most helpful to Nick on the site plan.
Do my best.
Okay, 299 Greenwich Avenue, application PLPZ 2013-166, final site plan. After they seeking approval to continue the use of the second and third floors under conditions of prior site plan approval in the CGBR and CGIO zone. Motion to approve the application noting the following. Site plan as proposed contains no changes to the site or building. Copies of any sublease by the Arts Alliance to tenant, subtenant shall be reviewed by the Selectmen's Office. Copies of sublease that has been executed should be returned to P&amp;Z file. The application has received MI approval under PLPZ 2023-165. Should we discuss the 2010 P&amp;Z recommendations? I think there's portions of that that may have to carry forward, but some of them have to be left behind. I think that's the kind of tricky part.
Like what?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mary.
Is it appropriate, since we're saying that the First Selectmen's Office is going to execute it, that they consult with P&amp;Z before execution, or do we not want to get into it at that point? Because it seems to me that if we're expecting the council to restrict their subleases to not-for-profits, or prepared to comply with local law, including zoning, that maybe checking with us first would be appropriate, but I don't, I don't know whether it's appropriate to have that consultation a condition to the First Selectmen approving it.
Why don't we just have asked for staff review? You okay with that, Patrick?
Okay, so staff review of proposed subleases?
Yeah.
Okay with everybody, Mr. Branion? I mean, I shouldn't ask you. I'm sorry, it's closed. You can't talk. Sorry, but you can, you can give Pat a little input.
It's going to be a form sublease anyway, so to the extent that it's a problem for staff, you're going to be seeing the identification of subleases and a form lease, which is going to be a short form if it's anything like the existing subleases, but that way, if there's any sort of alarm bells that go off, I doubt it very much, but that way, at least Planning and Zoning can advise if that's all right.
Okay. Okay, so staff review, possibly could we use this as the applicant should adhere to? And you know, applicable conditions stated in previous site plan approvals? That way, if there's anything that's in the 2010 concerning parking use, so on and so forth, hours of operation, that kind of thing, get carried forward. I just, I don't want to kind of, I don't want to just completely lose what we did in 2010.
You're absolutely right. Okay, I like that shorthand. That works.
Okay.
Okay, is that kind of a resolution? Is that kind of a motion altogether there?
Yeah.
Okey dokey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Mackry?
Aye.
Mr. Jeski?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes 5-0, and you're done with us for a while, Mr. Branion.
For a while. I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Bye-bye. All right, and Mr. Hegney has his hand up. Mr. Tomasz? I always get your, I pronounce your name a little wrong, Tomey Tomasz. We have, the applicant has postponed 137 doubling. If you can hear me, I don't know when it's going to be back on, but they have postponed 137 doubling. Mr. Tomasz? Okay, he's not hearing me. I, I getting alrighty. Well, did our best. Okay. All right, hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This is for a Hot Fit Yoga Studio at the CVS Building.
Okay, I was going to announce that for you. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm happy to do it.
All right, go ahead.
This is in the place where Katie's Cleaners was in 18 East Putnam Avenue in Cos Cob. This is a permitted use in the zone, based on the revisions that the commission made to the regulations of the LBR zone a few years ago. And as was pointed out at the briefing yesterday, the only issue here is the availability of parking. The proposal is to have a 22-person yoga studio, including the instructor, which, based on our regulations, requires 22 parking spaces. The dry cleaners required only six parking spaces based on the square footage of the space. So we hired Bernie Adler to do a parking study, and there were a couple of questions that came out of that yesterday. One was, was the liquor store occupied? And I've spoken to Mr. Adler and to the landlord, and the answer is yes. It was occupied at the time. The traffic study was done January 19th. There was one space vacant, and that was office, an office space of 566 square feet on the second floor.
Of course, the liquor store had only just opened, and still, as somebody mentioned yesterday from those of us who've checked it out, still isn't seeing the kind of business that the old one did, because everybody got used to it not being there. So even though it was in place, it doesn't have the volume yet that the previous one did. So it's just worth considering that the parking demand is not there yet for that spot.
And, and so when Mr. Adler was doing the, the study, he took into account Martin Luther King Day, which was the previous Monday when the parking study was done. And then he came back and did a spot check on February 7th. And based on those results, he increased the parking count and reduced the availability by 15%. I know there was another comment yesterday about doing one in the spring. If we did one right now, probably a traffic engineer would say that's not valid, because now all of the private schools are out of session. And that, as you may have noticed on the roads, has reduced the amount of traffic, at least what I see early in the morning. What the parking study did show is that even at peak time, which is 3:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon, only 88 parking spaces were occupied, leaving 67 vacant. And that would be assuming that all 22 spots in the yoga studio were occupied. At that time, there would still be more than ample parking. On Saturdays, it's even more pronounced. The peak is 11:30 to noon. Only 57 spaces are occupied, leaving 97 vacant. And I would point out that on the chart-
Come on, when I go there, I can never find a place to park.
I, I think, I think it's partly because well, the people that are going to the chicken barbecue place on the other side are parking there. And my, my client has taken the attitude of since there seems to be parking available, he's not going to give a hard time to a fellow business in the area. But also, a lot of the parking is in the basement, in the garage, and the people that are going into CVS probably are going to grab whatever space they have. But those going for a longer period of time, like an hour at a yoga studio, can park in the garage. And I've talked to the owner, Monique Kraus, about how she could better, and actually not better, but provide for notice. She could include it on her website, and also on app, which people use to schedule a class, as well as posting it with signs in the in the space itself. A couple of things on the, on the schedule. First is, they provide for half an hour between the classes. And that's partly because they want to make sure it's all clean and sanitized before the next group comes in. And probably give the instructor a bit of a break as well. But it's, it's really for cleaning that they do that, so that there isn't the opportunity, and as was mentioned yesterday, the Soul Cycle Syndrome of people just hanging around, and you're having an overlap of the parking that, that occurs in that particular facility. So what, what we have is a use, which I think is very compatible and complementary with the other uses. Someone could go to the yoga studio and then get a smoothie, for example, or stop and pick up whatever they need at CVS at the same time. And I think that was part of the, the thought when the commission expanded the number of permitted uses in the LBR zone a few years ago. And, and I think that it does and, and can work very well. I asked Mr. Adler if he thought there was any issue on the parking. He said, "We did a very conservative study, and frankly, approving this is a no-brainer." I, I believe that's the case as well.
Spoken, spoken like so we never hear, never hear that statement.
Too.
Mr. Hegney, we never hear that from the, from the traffic engineers. Mr. Jeski, if you would go ahead. Oh, unmute, unmute.
Mute.
Dennis, Dennis, unmute.
You're muted. Sorry.
Okay.
I was laughing. I muted myself. I'm sorry. Mr. Hegney, you were doing a great job until the last 20 seconds, and then you just destroyed your credibility. A couple of things. We mentioned some other things. We have this-
Mr. Jeski.
What's that?
Then just forget the last 20 seconds of what I said.
Okay, I've forgotten it. I'm like a goldfish. I forgot the last 20 seconds. Remember that line out of Ted Lasso? We, every time we have a big bulk parking, we talk about employee parking, and it was brought up yesterday. Would the applicant agree to go to the other tenants and try to get parking underground? The big issue here is people don't even know the underground, or they don't want to go in the underground. Our chair apparently has never been underground in that parking lot. Neither have I. Is that something that they would be open to?
Certainly. Certainly. I think utilizing the parking in an efficient fashion like that helps the businesses, helps, helps the owner, helps stores, so absolutely.
And I heard you say notice in the website and everything, but someone else yesterday mentioned signs around the parking lot to kind of get people directed towards the underground?
That's, that's certainly something that that Erstap Mittel could look at in terms of providing that as well. Yeah, I-
That was a maybe. Well- First one was a yes, and this one's a maybe. Okay.
Let me change it. I, since I have another 20 seconds to spend here. Yes, the answer to your question is yes, that can be done.
Last question. Having never been in the underground, how do people get out of the underground to get in?
There's an elevator and a flight of stairs.
The yoga studio. Is there like a-
There's an elevator and a flight of stairs.
So they come inside, right?
Yeah. So in fact, you can do all this. I have been there once in 20, the last 20 years. And you can do all this without getting wet, which today could have been handy. But-
Very handy.
But-
Do people ever, but they also park in service lot, right? This up on the surface? They would assume that they can find a space they're going to park there, right? Mr. Hegney?
They, they may or may not. I think they may find it more convenient to park in the garage and take the elevator up.
Okay. I find that parking lot weird. I mean, you, when you start walking across that lot, it's kind of like some of Reno sections. You take your life in your hand. I don't know what can be done from a pedestrian safety, but that ought to be looked into. Last question. Would they, I love and I compliment the applicant for their class schedule. And I'm, I'm reading all the, the traffic report here, and it does kind of jive, except for the 4 o'clock ones. Even though it's not peak, it's close to the peak. Would they maybe want to experiment when leaving out the 4, just the 4 o'clock until we get a better feel of traffic and and parking? If you look at, and this is just for the weekdays, not Saturday. You're right. You know, the weekend is not really ever an issue. But 4 o'clock on a weekday, going into the 5 o'clock witching hour could be a parking issue. I don't know whether that's something they might consider. I'm only talking about the 4 to 5 o'clock session.
Yeah, and looking at the graph that was part of the parking study, we're showing 79 parking spaces occupied from 4:00 to 4:30 out of the 156. And that's a drop from the 88, which is the peak.
It's close.
Earlier in the week, earlier in the day.
It's not the numbers. It's not the numbers. It's, it's the surface parking idea. We, we see the numbers, but it's just to get into the parking garage, you have to go through that lot. A lot of people are going to be looking for surface parking, and it is a little crowded at that point. I don't know, just a thought. I was wondering if they would be interested in, at least temporarily, not using the 4 o'clock slot.
Mr. Jeski, Monique Kraus, who's the owner of the Hot Fit Yoga Studio, is-
Well, can you make that bigger?
Is also available.
Okay.
And perhaps you could address that.
And I'm talking about temporarily, just to see how this works, because there is going to be a Soul Cycle phenomena here. And it isn't just the parking, it's the traffic in and out of the, of the lot, so.
Yeah, it's, it's actually the morning classes that are busiest.
Right.
Maybe, maybe not the ones 6:00 to 7:00, but the one at 9:30 is, is fairly active.
We let in-
We let in, the shopping center is much less active.
Well, and the other thing is, the folks, the folks that, I would say that the three thirty, that, that air, the time that falls into school pickup time is probably going to be fairly unpopular. And if that's the peak time in the parking lot, maybe there could be a break then. So what, what we'd be looking for, we're all saying is to work the classes around what we believe to be optimal availability in the parking lot. And you could always come back and revise that schedule. We could have it be up to staff to sign off on a revision, since this would not be a, this is, this, the only reason this is before us is because of the parking demand. And we could just ask that if after a year of operation, that schedule isn't, is creating a, a problem that you go back and have, have staff review it and it could be revised. But that we would, I, what we're all saying is start with the times that you know the parking lot is empty, because you got some great windows. We were talking yesterday that folks tend to work out in early in the morning, after work in the evening, and pretty much all day Saturday, in and out. That's going to be a problem, because that lot does get full on Saturdays. I know, Mr. Hegney, you're telling me there's a lot of spaces, but not on the surface. But again, if we could get all the employees to go down above, below ground, because it doesn't seem fair to me to ask customers to go out of their way and park below ground. I think someone already said that. So we, we could work this. It was you, right, Mr. Yeski? So asking, it's, but somebody raised it in the, in the briefing yesterday. It's a fairness point. Especially to burden the yoga studio with having to park underground when no other business has that burden. So why not just ask all the employees to start parking across the shopping center to park below ground?
And they're cars. Something that, that, that the owner of the property can require.
Right. And, and the owner of the property is listening and could just ask that, and it's nice for the employees. Their cars don't get hot, cold, wet. There's, you know, it's actually better for them, right? And that way, you're not inconveniencing the studio as much, or being unfair to it relative to the other businesses. And then the other thing is to reconsider the schedule. When do most of the stores open? They're open by nine? CVS opens earlier, as I remember. But.
I think it's twenty four hours at that.
Yeah, I don't think.
No, 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 that's not a twenty four hour CVS, my friends. Ooh, the commission was super nasty about that when it got, when it went in in the spot at Porcelli's, and we very much limited their hours. In fact, I think on Sundays, the pharmacy closes at like five or six. I can look it up while we're talking.
Well, the pharmacy may, I, I thought the store.
No, it's, no, no, not a twenty four hour. I remember when we did it.
Riverside one, and that shopping center is open twenty fourth.
Hold on, looking it up, but it, hours. Cosco, right? So, and they're really the biggest traffic driver there, right?
True.
All right, I'm finding on the website that their hours are seven AM to nine PM. So you would only be competing with them. They would be the only ones using the parking lot, really, until nine AM. And then everybody else starts to come in. And by then, ma'am, I think your volume drops.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Hi, I'm Monique Kraus.
Hi, Ms. Kraus. So I'll rename you now. Two S's or one?
One S.
So so that's, so talk to us, if you would, a little bit about how a schedule that would work for you while, because you also don't want people to say, oh, I'm not taking that yoga class. I could never find a place to park. So talk about a schedule that would work for you and your business while taking advantage of when there's vacancy in the parking lot.
Yes, so the most popular classes will, are usually with, we have two other studios. It's six AM, and eight thirty AM, and nine thirty AM, around that area. Sometimes lunch, which if we did a class at lunchtime, it would be a shorter class, forty five minutes. And then it starts off around four o'clock again, and tapers off by six PM. I, if it helps, I, I don't drive, so I won't be taking a parking spot. That'll be one less. But, you know, we can definitely do what we can to steer all of our clients down into the basement parking, absolutely.
And the other, well, I kind of feel bad about doing that to you, because no other business has to be, has to steer their clients into the basement. And you don't want to inconvenience when you're, your clients, when you're starting a new business. What about, so what about if you reduce some of the classes in your, because right now you've got the whole day, pretty much, right? What about if you reduce the emptiest classes, had a nap, did some meditating, got rid of them, and then reduce, or reduce the size of them?
During the certain times, reduce the size? We can play around with that. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, play around with, you know, like at the peak times for the parking lot, reduce the size, or eliminate a couple of the classes that are going to be basically dead empty anyway.
We are going, also, also going to offer a hot bar class, so we could also arrange those in the times when the parking is more full, because that's less people. So we can absolutely work with that.
I, if, if you just had the air conditioning on, it would be fine with. Mr. McRae.
Here's, looking at the schedule and Mr. Adler's charts, there's actually kind of a built in midday gap that kind of works.
Okay, let me go back to it, because or do you want to?
Yeah, for the weekday, ten thirty, your total available is about eighty three spaces. And then it just nose dives down to sixty seven at three. And then again, at five, it's back to eighty three spaces. And then on the, the scheduling chart, it's almost approximating that with minor, some minor adjustments, except for a, a midday class at Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that kind of thing, slight adjustment might work.
Yeah, go to the classes, because we're.
That would be in the, the.
Oh, you, you're looking for the class schedule? I'm sorry, I thought you were looking.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking.
Pat, on the, on the presentation material we submitted, the class schedule is sheet four.
Thank you, Tom.
So then on the, the Saturday, it's almost the same, nine thirty, it's about a hundred thirteen, then it starts to pick up around three, three thirty, where you get more spaces. So it could be that situation where if you're kind of just modifying or slightly adjusting the class times to avoid the peak in midday. I think that might work really well. And those two, those two at twelve on Tuesdays and Thursdays would be the outliers. But I think actually, and this goes back to what it was, Dennis was talking about kind of reinforcing things that it, I think slight adjustments earlier and later may actually avoid the congestion and the traffic of people going to the site and then leaving. Because it may avoid the school drop off pickup thing, both in the morning and the night.
Think you all could work it. Let me go quickly to people who want to say stuff. First, Peter Lowe, then Ms. Biddle.
Yeah, I, I'm listening to this. Do, do we really want to be, you know, hamstringing a new business?
No, we don't. We're trying.
Compromising their busiest hours. I, I don't.
No, we don't want to hamstring the business, but the yoga demand hours will be different from the peak hours in the parking lot. So we're trying to, we're suggesting to them that they try to work around their peak demand should be fine, because they're only competing with CVS early in the morning. So they could go all out, have classes in the, you know, all the classes they want early in the morning, no problem.
Right, but, but a business such as this or any business needs to count on a, a full day of business. And if there is an opportunity for them
Okay.
to generate more people coming in during the so-called less congested hours. I, I don't know why we'd want to be.
So the thing is that for a lot of them, it's not profitable, and this would be what Ms. Kraus would have to decide. It may not be profitable to run the whole day and be bringing in instructors. If you're paying an instructor to teach a class with two people, you don't make money. So my experience of, so just let me finish. My experience of yoga and bar is that eventually the studios eliminate the non-profitable classes. So if I said it wrong, Ms. Kraus, what I was asking you to do is look at when you don't think you're going to have people coming, but it is peak time in the parking lot, and could you fiddle with that? But we're not trying to hamstring you. We kind of want, I want your business to be successful.
Can I?
Go ahead. Now, now, Low.
With, with all due respect, I, I don't think, I, I've been a business consultant, and I don't think we're in the business of advising them how to run their business. Am I right about that?
Well, you're right and you're wrong, because on the other hand, we have to make sure that we aren't prejudicing any of the existing businesses by creating a shortage of parking. We know that the parking's a little tight at certain times on the surface. We know it's there, it's tight. So what we're trying to do is spread out the parking demand so that it, everybody makes money that has a store there, and Ms. Biddle has a successful shopping center.
I, I understand this. And I understand if, if we're to believe the, forget about the parking study, but if if the numbers of parking spaces below ground are more than sufficient, as Mr. Hegney has represented, and I have no reason to believe that they aren't. You know, we're, we're sort of dis, again, it seems like we are imposing some potential disadvantage to this particular tenant. I, I don't know, I just.
We're, we're trying to get to not do that. It are very intent. And the wording that we gave Ms. Kraus was to not do that. What I was said to her is, what could you do? Because if her people come and they can't park, I know this, you know this from Greenwich. If they can't park right where they want to park, they're going to be annoyed and they're going to leave. So it isn't to her advantage either. It, it's good for us to think through what the demand is from all the businesses. Ms. Biddle, I would love to hear from you right now. Let, let Ms. Biddle come in. It's her.
It's her shopping center.
Hi, everyone. I am Ellie. I'm with Erstap Mittel. I just wanted to address one comment earlier about employee parking. We do have provisions in leases that allow us to designate employee parking, and we definitely would be. We definitely can encourage employees.
Can you turn off the second, second device?
I'm only on this device.
I don't know why it's echoing. Who has two devices? Okay, it's good now. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Biddle. So you could do the conditions for the parking of the employees?
Yes, we can send out notices to have them on, parked downstairs.
And that would be great. You've never done that before, right?
We do encourage it, like when a tenant first signs a lease, we'll let them know, but we can certainly send reminders.
Okay, so you would, you would encourage them to park downstairs? And the apartments probably all parked downstairs, the resident, they.
Yeah, they, they all parked downstairs. They prefer to park downstairs.
Right, that makes sense. And is, I, I can't really ask you if, if the traffic engineer's analysis makes sense. Because of course you would have to say yes. So, but what we're trying to get to is, we don't want to hamstring your, any of your tenants. We don't want to put any of your tenants at a disadvantage with this. And so what we're trying to do is figure out how this business can come in without somebody getting mad that they can't park at the liquor store. Because I don't think the liquor store is doing volume yet either.
Yeah, I mean, someone had a suggestion of putting signs in the parking lot.
Yes.
I don't think we have enough right now. I will acknowledge that. So we would be open to adding signs saying garage parking downstairs.
Ms. Jenkins.
Yes, just a factual clarification. Fifty four of the spaces are permit only. Are those marked on the, on the actual parking surface, or is that just a, a general permit? I don't know who can answer that.
Ms. Biddle.
Ms. Biddle, you're.
I would have to look into that. I'm not aware of the permit parking.
Okay. I just, I couldn't remember whether I, I looked at it. I just marked that fifty four are permit only. And if it's permit only, presumably you could also tell them you have a permit and this is where you're going to park. And I just, I, I couldn't verify.
That might be in reference to employee, but I'd have to check.
Okay. Gives you a little more control in terms of that's fifty, a hundred and fifty five is quite a lot.
Because to Mr. Lowe's point, we, to, to what Mr. Lowe was saying, we don't want to restrict Ms. Kraus. And we want her to be able to run our business. On the other hand, if she knows from her previous experience that nobody ever shows up for a one o'clock class or a two o'clock class, she could just not have the class at that time. But, and that we would ask her that. Cancel whatever you think isn't worth having. But what Ms. Jenkins is saying is great, to get the permit people, put signs up, and get everybody downstairs that is all day users and folks who live there. And that would, if you did that, you'd probably free up, hopefully, some more parking and accommodate this business. Because, you see, the other thing that I'm thinking, Ms. Biddle, is when folks go to the liquor store and it just opened, I mean, it's still newish, they want to be right close because they're carrying stuff. Same thing, not as much with CVS, because people don't buy heavy stuff. But when someone gets a case of something, you know, they want to line up right there. Right by the, right by the, the side at that, the rear entrance. So you want to have all those spaces available. So I don't think the liquor store users is, are going to want to take the elevator.
I mean, I think we have, we have a, we have a whole two wings of office tenants, so also by having them definitely park all downstairs, it should help.
Do you think they're not parking downstairs now? I mean, I would park downstairs if I was an office tenant.
I mean, given the amount of office times that we have and the amount of available spaces downstairs, I don't think all of them are going to be parking downstairs.
Well, that would be the easiest answer to move the all day users underground.
Yeah, and we have provisions in their lease that we can dictate where they can park, that we can definitely send out.
I mean, that gives Ms. Kraus the greatest flexibility.
Right.
Okay, anything else from the commission? I, and, and we said this yesterday, I don't think you were listening. We said this yesterday. We want to help you fill these spaces. A, we all live in town. And this is a space, this is a place everybody goes all the time, because it's central. But we also never want to see empty storefronts in town. So, I mean, I, I'm disturbed that Fleischer's is still empty. And, you know, I want to see them fill up. It's important to our vitality. So we want to, we want to be helpful, but at the same time, it is interesting to hear the constant comment in Greenwich that if you can't park right in front of the business you're going to, you don't go there. You want to park right in front of the door. That's how people think. Maybe yoga people don't think that way. Maybe they're a little more zen about parking. You could try that, Ms. Kraus. Teach them to be zen about parking. That it's okay.
To your comment about, you don't want empty storefronts. It is, what is, I'm curious, what is, what is the timing of the, of the lease? Immediately?
Yes, as soon as we get approval.
Okay. What do y'all think? Do you want to, you, you think we could make a decision and write it in a way that it works right now? Or do you want them to think of, I, I think we've, there are three pieces that we've talked about. One is the signage, the underground parking for all office. Make sure all, all day users are underground. Get signage. And then the third thing is that choose. Get signage. And then the third thing is that choose the extent it's, it's possible that for the yoga studio to consider it, so we wouldn't require it, for the yoga studio to consider reducing the size or frequency of classes during peak parking periods. That leaves you the flexibility, Ms. Kraus. If it doesn't work for you, you don't. But if, but you and Ms. Biddle could work, because she's gonna want you to not fill the parking lot at the wrong times as well. Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mr. Hegney, you, you just have to obey.
I know, I don't, I don't get a vote anymore.
You just have to obey.
But, yeah, I, I wanna get everybody in the, the, the way of nodding in the right way.
You're not voting.
The, 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 the bottom line here is the, that the chances, there are much greater chances that Ms. Kraus is gonna be immediately affected negatively than anybody else being a new tenant trying to get things up and going. So if her clients don't have, uh, don't perceive that there's sufficient parking, um, that's gonna be most detrimental to her.
And the liquor store. That liquor store is not really going yet. I've been keeping an eye on it, okay? I keep an eye on all those stores. That's my neck of the woods, and I keep an eye. I want, I want that shopping center to do well. It killed me to lose Porritelli's. So that liquor store is still not doing what the other area liquor stores do. And there's no reason for this. Real nice, all set up nice. What's going on?
Well, the prices could be a little bit higher.
Okay, shh. So, no, I'm just saying.
You don't know.
It's a stat, we don't know, but I'm just saying, I wanna make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to park, all the clients. Okay, so you guys, you think that kinda works? Does anybody have an issue? All right, okay. Mary?
Madam Chair, are we still waiting for DPW comment on traffic, or did we get it? I, I haven't been reading this couple days.
Did not, but to be honest, this is not a commission matter except for the parking. So I don't even, I'm not sure we have to. Patrick, do you feel like you have, we have to wait?
Well, I, I, I think with the gap being so large in both the, the peak hours, the weekend and the weekday, I, I, I can't imagine that any correction that's being suggested is going to, go that there's a lack of parking, right, available. So i- with that regard, in this instance, I don't think it's, it's absolutely critical. And also, you know, not that other traffic engineers are less reputable, but Mr., um.
Oh, you know, the commission just always.
Mr. Adler, Mr. Adler has significant experience and, and, you know, is familiar with the commission and then what they're looking for. So, um, if, if we're okay with the assessment now, even with a, a slight increase at some point, I think, I think the study shows that there's probably not gonna be a lack of parking at, at any of the peak hours.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, I, you know, it's just the question of us being comfortable that we're applying our regulations in a way that works for all the businesses, that our regulations are being fairly applied. I think we're doing that. And we're giving all the businesses equal opportunity to succeed, which is the key thing. But yes, the two new businesses would be the most disadvantaged. I don't think anyone's gonna stop going to CVS right away. The last question I have is, uh, just asking everybody, will, especially Patrick, but will the construction at a hundred have any impact on this? On this shopping center or on the parking?
Well, there is a construction phasing plan that was required, and, and there's clearly detailed out the, you know, the limits of the construction and what's gonna happen. The parking lot there, uh, although not available, you know, there's no tenant in the building, so there shouldn't be any demand for parking that will extend over, uh, the commercial, the, excuse me, the construction vehicle should be accommodated at site. They shouldn't be uh, lining the street or certainly be using the neighboring property. I wouldn't think that'd be something that the, uh, Ursula Biddle team would be in favor of, but, um, so there shouldn't be an impact. However, if there is, it, it will most likely be temporary, or will, if it not, it needs to be addressed later, you know.
While we have you here, Ms. Biddle, if you see construction vehicles clogging up your parking, please reach out to Patrick.
Yeah, we definitely will. Thank you.
Because that, I, your parking lot really doesn't have the room to start accommodating the construction of that. It'll be great for your business once it's done, but it won't have the, it won't, I, you just can't, you can't get two new businesses going, I think. So, all right, okay. Um, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
Can we ask public comment, Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
No, I completely forgot. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Saved by no public comment. I also forgot on the last one. Um, sorry, you guys gotta keep me going here. It's been a long few days at the legislature. So, uh, therefore we will close this application at this time. And I think we have the basis for a motion uh, seated on this application are all the regular items and, um.
We're items now.
Are all the regular, I'm really tired. And we will, um.
Relegate it to open status.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. All right. Nick, over to you, because I clearly can't even talk.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, one thirty-eighty, Putnam Avenue, um. The applicant, uh, oh, PLPZ, uh, twenty twenty-three zero seven five, the applicant seeking final coastal site plan uh, to change the use of, from a dry cleaner to group fist, fitness center, as well as modify off-street parking requirements in the LBR two in COZ zones. Uh, the commission finds that, uh, uh, the proposed change of use can be accommodated by the onsite, uh, parking. It is noted that, uh, the zoning enforcement officer, uh, indicated that it meets the BZ building zone regulations and approved for sign-off in a letter dated five thirty-one. Uh, the applicant should appear to the ARC signage committee for approval of proposed signage. Therefore, a motion to approve with the following conditions. Uh, oh, wait, actually, they also, the, uh, commission finds that, uh, the there is a half hour gap between classes, uh, according to the proposed schedule. Um, therefore, a motion approved with the following conditions. Office and all-day tenants should be encouraged to, uh, park, uh, in the underground garage. The, uh, applicant, um, or the property owner should provide clear signage to location of garage and, um, uh, long-term tenant parking. Um, and the applicant shall, uh, consider reducing the size and/or frequency of, uh, classes during high-peak parking times. Uh, anything else that you wanted to add to this?
Lower Yaski. You've been the most engaged in the discussion. Peter Low, are we being fair to the businesses?
Well, we're not. Is what Nick just said a, a condition, a formal condition?
That she will consider it.
Right. So it's, if, if we leave it that way, I'm, I'm okay with it.
You're comfortable, because.
I think that there, ultimately, it's not gonna be us who's gonna know anything about, you know, how this works. Uh, they're gonna know immediately.
Yeah. And, but on the other hand, it's us who has the responsibility to make sure that our regulations work for all the businesses. And that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I was kinda keeping in back of my mind, you know, it's that, that Yogi Berra thing, you know, people don't go there anymore. It's too crowded.
Exactly. It's that, always that Yogi Berra thing with parking, and that's really the issue. How many times I've driven through that very parking lot and said, ugh, and kept going? Because I, I come in on the tailor's side and I come out the other end, cause there's no parking. So I, I know there's times when it's empty and I, okay, Ms. Biddle, I never go downstairs. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
That is Mr. Levy who has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also ayeing with that the motion passes five nothing. Thank you, people.
Thank you very much.
Anytime you decide not to have it, be hot, count on me.
Good luck.
Good luck. Very best of luck to you both with this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, okay. Mr. Hegney, are you staying?
Aye.
Oh, that's terrible timing, Madam Chair.
He was, he was frozen there for a moment.
I, uh, I was, you asked him a question as I was, uh, promote, putting him back out.
Okay, well, we will go now to the public hearing. Mr. Basili, sound check?
Uh, hello, the sound is just great. Thank you.
And Mr. Basili, I don't know if you saw this, but you only have one item.
I saw it. I'm well aware, and I expect to be done in ten minutes.
I wouldn't count on that. We're big talkers. At least I am. All right, thank you, Mr. Basili. Hello, Mr. Hasland. This is, um, application is Railroad Avenue Realty and Development LLC for a preliminary site plan and special permit at two eighty, two eighty-one Railroad Avenue and zero Woodland Drive. Uh, Mr. Hasland?
Good evening, uh, everyone. I thought we were actually gonna make it before five o'clock, which would have been, I think, uh, a new, um, record, but, uh, you just missed it by two minutes. I heard the bells from the congressional church just right. Um, but anyway, it looks like a promising early night. Uh, we had hoped to have this on as a final tonight to open, but we were running out of time, um, so we converted to preliminary. Um, the big issue is, uh, with the sewer, which I'll get to in a second, um, and that's the time-consuming, um, matter. As you know, we, we first appeared in front of you as a pre-app in, I think, early twenty twenty-one. Um, and the pre-app, uh, process is, I think, generally very good. Um, the downside, one of the downsides possibly is the fact that you don't get departmental comments, however, until uh, you actually filed a formal application. And in this case, you know, a lot of departmental comments came in, which we've been, uh, addressing. I think we're ninety percent of the way there, and I think but for the, the sewer, uh, we would be opening tonight, uh, as a final uh, with you. Um, before I address the other issues, let me just tell you about the sewer, because that is the most important. Uh, there's a private sewer line that runs across the property from the east to the west, and, uh, it's been there since the, uh, late nineteenth century. Um, and there's no real record of, uh, who is served by that line. Uh, so we've had to rely to a certain extent on, um, anecdote and visual uh, confirmations. I have to say that we found the sewer division, their historic knowledge of this line is remarkable. Um, but even they are kind of flummoxed by some of it. Um, and what's happened is over the years, when issues have arisen, they've discovered other elements and pieces of this, of this line. But it seems to us at the moment that there are uh, either six or seven properties served by this, uh, sewer, uh, easement, which appears to be a floating easement pursuant to First American Title Company who, who, uh, looked into the issue, which means you can move it, um, typically. And, uh, there's either five or six on Woodland. We're trying to confirm the, the sixth house, um, by getting permission to access that property. We haven't been able to contact, uh, those, uh, people yet, um, although I did, uh, reach out to them back in October. Um, and I reached out to ongoing, and again, today, we've had, um, Highland Sewer out there scoping, uh, with the oversight of the town. And we've been working with other neighbors on Woodland, uh, to get access into the system. I think everyone's fairly excited by the fact that uh, this is gonna result, uh, hopefully, in an improvement to their system, because the line, at least to the extent that runs across our property, uh, down to Horse Neck, serving the existing properties, um, will be improved, which is great. Um, the, as far as the new line for, uh, the apartment building is concerned, uh, we've been working with the sewer division on running that, in, in fact, in a northerly direction, uh, and then down Woodland, and then, uh, down eventually, um, to Arch Street, so that we don't have to tie into Horse Neck, which is, is super. Uh, because as you know, Horse Neck is, is challenged. But anyway, we're working on it. It's just that we're running out of time to open, and we knew it was a big enough issue for your, you folks not to, uh, expect that you could, um, uh, really consider the, uh, application as a final at this stage. So that's why we, we converted to preliminary. Um, that said, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel and, uh, that we're getting there. Um, we're getting there fairly quickly on this issue, and, um, hope to have it resolved, uh, soon. So at that point, um, we'll file for a final if we get the green light from you folks on this preliminary, which I hope we will. Um, some of the other issues, uh, there are, in addition to the sewer easement, uh, there's a five-foot wide easement on the eastern side of the property, uh, which runs along the border, which favors the, uh, the people that own the, uh, the property with Indian restaurant on it, and that's for water and for gas. Uh, there's also an easement on the westerly side of the property, northwest westerly, uh, which provides access to one ninety-one Field Point Road and also a drainage line. We've been working with, uh, Tom Hegney and his client, uh, who owns one ninety-one, and we have mutual interest in resolving that, uh, issue, and we are working on it. Tom and I are working on language, uh, right now, um, to, uh, solidify that agreement. So that's in the works too. Um, the, the line on the eastern boundary is not gonna be touched. It'll stay as it is. And we've been in touch with the owners of that property, and there's, there should be no issue there either. So those issues will hopefully all be resolved fairly quickly and documented. Um, but, uh, again, this, the sewer line is the one that's been the most challenging, but we're, we're getting there. Um, the, uh, zoning, I believe is all compliant. Um, I think the staff notes, I just saw Pat today at, at Plan Zone, and he agreed that there was that conflict that seemed to exist between, uh, in one-ten, doesn't really exist. Um, it's, uh, the, uh, the language he was referring to, some of it was stricken when you redid one-ten, and we're compliant by doing fifteen percent uh, of the units as being affordable, um, which amounts rounding up to, to three units. Um, Mr. Wells was right. I had a typo in, uh, that marketability plan. It should have said eight rather than B, but you can see how I missed that because of, like, capital B looks an awful lot like an eight, and I just didn't catch it when I was reviewing. So that was the reason why. So thank you, Mr. Wells, for pointing that out. So there wasn't some confusion down the road. Um, the, uh, traffic, we've resolved all the issues with Beta and, uh, DPW. Um, there were some circulation issues, which we've also resolved, but we have to submit documents which show that we have resolved, but those are resolved, uh, internally at least, and, and we're on top of that. Then the, uh, engineering comments with regard to, uh, drainage, um, we will make the foundation watertight. Uh, to Mr. McRae's point, yes, the reason why the foundation is out of the ground about six feet or so is to reduce the amount of uh, water issue that we have, um, on the property, uh, and that's why it was designed in that, in that fashion. But of course, we are complying with all the height, uh, and requirements, et cetera. Um, there was a comment about, there's no, uh, green roof. Um, that's correct. We have recreation up on the roof. Um, and we did not propose to put a green roof up there. Um, we have spoken to the town engineer. He said that was a recommendation, not a requirement, and we meet all the drainage, uh, exemption requirement, or drainage requirements, uh, without having to do the green roof. To the extent that we might add more plantings up there, et cetera, we'll consider that in the future, but for the moment, our priority is to create recreation for the, uh, for the, uh, unit, uh, tenants. Uh, let's see, what else in that regard? Obviously, it's important that we resolve the sewer issue too, because that goes to uh, how we get to the ultimate drainage calculations, as well as the location of the building, et cetera. But as I said, I think we'll, we'll have no, no trouble resolving that. The, um, uh, ARC, uh, we're going back hopefully at the, for the July fifth meeting. Um, Lucia Delio, our architect, is working hard and making modifications that are responsive to some of their concerns. And we hope they'll, they'll kinda like what they see. Uh, and, uh, I think that was pretty much all the issues that were raised by Pat and his, uh, his, uh, staff notes and by you yesterday at the briefing. So I have my team with me and, uh, and Adam Jacobson, uh, principal.
Mr. McRae is ready for you, Mr. Hasland.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Hasland, you, you mentioned, uh, uh, the right-of-way access, uh, to one ninety-one on the, on the west. The five foot on the east. What about the switchgear for the telephones in the middle of the site?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Um, they're not, they're not already gone. They should have been gone several months ago. We've been in touch with the telephone company, and they know they have an obligation to remove them, um, pursuant to a written agreement. So those are gonna disappear.
Okay, they're being removed or relocated?
Removed, as I understand it. And, and Pat, if you wanna chime in, if I'm mistaken in that regard, feel free. Otherwise, um, that's my understanding.
Okay, and you're talking about the sewer. Okay, and you're talking about the sewer line, you said goes, would go to the north to Woodland and then down to Arch Street?
Yes.
Um, the existing sewer ladder that goes through the site, uh, does that serve uh, Woodland Drive as well? That, that, that's where the properties are coming from?
It serves the, the, yeah, the five or six properties on Woodland that um, use it. It, 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 that's what it serves. And it serves the uh, property immediately to the east on Railroad Avenue, which is where the Indian restaurant is. And that will remain in place, but replaced with a newer pipe, just serving those properties as, as historically been the case. With no objection, no objection by sewer.
Right. And this is not a pure drainage exemption, you know, it's all last word, you know, it's um, you, we kind of reconfiguring stuff. So we've got a full drainage report to come.
Yes, um, that was a misstatement.
Okay, the, the um, easement areas. Um, I think one of the things I'd like just to be comfortable is to make sure that actually there's nothing in there that will preclude you from actually uh, with the intent of the project. As an example, and you can, you need to verify it, that five-foot wide for the water and gas. Uh, you just to make sure if, if that's gotta be open and clear or you can plant, because I know for the landscape plan, there's a, a lot of stuff that's supposed to be in there, planted in there. So I think actually just understanding that kind of thing is, um, any impediments that they raise that actually would have a significant design change, probably needs to be looked at and looked at upfront, just so we're not kind of going back and forth to the last minute. We can't do this, we can't do that because of. Um, now, the grade issue, it, it's a, it's a water table problem. That's what you're talking about?
That's my understanding from my client, correct?
Okay. It would seem that, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of missing how that is. I don't know. You done test borings to find it? The uh, water table? Because it would seem to me actually overall, maybe one of the things an A R C can take a look at that. You're using the average setback at the street of the buildings. Um, we've kind of anticipated this as our 6110. Uh, you know, very much appreciate actually going through the process to see how we, we would look from what we had thought about uh, months ago when we put this together. But I'm just saying is that, you know, i- is it an honest-to-god water table project because you've got an open garage there? You're gonna get water in there no matter what? Or is it something else? Because it would, I would appreciate it if it could be lowered to the street, understanding it's closer to the street than we normally would be.
Uh, Lucia, do you want to address that? Lucia Delia, our architect? If you can uh, promote him, great, or raise your hand, Lucia.
I don't think he's here. Um.
I'm not seeing him either.
Oh.
Okay, so Mr. Mr. Hasland, I think actually.
You can pretend with Mr. McRae.
Um, you know, is it, is it a water table issue? Do you have borings that says so, so on, so forth? I, I, I just to be a little bit stern about this, I want proof. Uh, I, you know, you're telling me one thing, but I want proof that it's really a water table issue because as I see it, you're gonna get water in this garage from your open, your open uh, garage uh, entrance anyway. You're gonna have to have an underdrain situation for it. So you're gonna get, get the water. If it's a stone issue, you don't want to blast, so on, so forth. It's expensive to dig. That's a whole different story.
I will get you a conclusive answer for that. It may be a combination of things, but uh, I will get you a conclusive answer.
Okay, and it just basically goes back to the average setback. You're closer to the street than would be normal. And I think it's, it's understanding that you have a taller building that's gonna be that much more higher out of the ground in comparison to the curb line on a railroad avenue.
Say that again, Mr. McRae.
Okay. So because he's gonna be using the average setback, which is provided for.
Right.
Um, and so he's gonna be closer to the street than would normally be allowed. So the height, perceived height from the curb line of Railroad Avenue is going to be augmented by the building being up out of the ground because the garage can't be sunk. And I think actually you really want to know why. What, what is that, the condition? Is it really a water table issue or is it something else? Because right now, this is gonna, the building is gonna be abnormally high because of those other conditions. And I think it's one of the things we've always talked about is that, that curb to cornice ratio. And in this case, taking advantage of pushing it forward is, you know, that's, condition is even more exacerbated.
Yeah, it's a fairly flat lot, but it does slope to the front a bit too. So, but yeah.
Right, so seven, you've got uh, 39-ish in the back, one, kind of relatively, but it runs 37 all the way through to about 36 at the street. But you're going up four feet instantly from the street to 41, I think it is, elevation 41. And elevation 39 in the back. And I think as I see it with the sections, it's just to accommodate the half burying the garage.
I alerted my uh, team that uh, we were gonna be on a lot earlier than we thought we were gonna be on, but I guess uh.
Well, that's okay. You're not, you're not ready to be, you know, but you've got the sewer thing to resolve, so you could just take Mr. McRae's questions with you. Uh, cause some of them are gonna require, I think, a little bit more thought to the question about the water table and what limitations it creates for that. Um, trees. Uh, Mr. McRae was talking about the landscaping as well. Um, and I believe, uh, where are you now with A R C? You're gonna go back and they want you to reduce the glass amount?
Well, they want us to soften the building a bit, so we have various uh.
Ideas for them.
Right, to do that. And they actually, we've already incorporated some of them into this by um, they wanted us to uh, redo the front landscaping, which we've done. Um,
Yeah.
To soften that uh, to Mr. McRae's point, to soften the transition uh, in there. So we, yeah, we have some work with them, um, but we think we have some good answers and uh, so we look forward to going back. I did get a text from Adam Jacobson that, yes, the phone company has removed uh, that um, material uh, in the back. It's all gone and not relocated, gone.
Okay, if I could turn quickly to Mr. Wells and Mr. Levy have been waiting to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Hasland, uh, some follow-up questions on the marketability plan. Uh, my understanding is this project is gonna be the, the three below-market housing uh, units are moderate income dwelling units, right?
Mm-hmm.
And go ahead.
Yep, I'm working right off your chart. Uh, your 6110 chart.
Okay, so moderate income, but your marketing plan refers to, it's got affordable housing units all throughout it. The section one, units designated for affordable housing units. Affirmed of, you know, rental for A H U, H U should be publicized. So I don't know why it doesn't refer to moderate income dwelling units. Uh, throughout.
Working right off your chart.
No, but I'm looking at your marketing plan. Right? Why, why isn't the marketing plan referring to moderate income dwelling units? As opposed to affordable housing units? Affordable housing units fall under 8-30G and moderate income dwelling units fall under 6-110.
Well, because according to your chart, and I may be wrong, but this is the way I read it, and also I have been working with Crystal Berry uh, from the P and Z department. But if you look at your chart, table one incentives, we have uh, 17 units. You got between 11 and 24 units. And it says that 15% must be below market rate. And the type of B M R unit required is an A H U. And uh, so then working off of that and then off the language within the um, the regulation itself, that's how we came up with that marketing plan language. And if I'm wrong, um, I, I'm happy to be corrected, but that's was my understanding. I think this is the first one you've had come through uh, under you, 6-110. So it's very conceivable that I could be mistaken, or Crystal and I could be mistaken, but uh, we thought we were doing it the correct way.
Got it. I mean, I, I would say, I, I found other issues with uh, uh, with the 6-10, but I, I would have thought, why don't we have uh, M I D in, in that uh, horizontal column between 11 and 24? I don't understand why M I D wouldn't be in there, but.
Because we switch, we switch the affordability level. When you get bigger, you're supposed to switch the affordable li- oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but they're, they're qualifying, they're qualifying the income under M I D, but they're qualifying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The numbers under H A U, there's a huge disconnect.
Yeah, but uh, okay, you know what? Um, we've got to go to the person who drafted. Oh, Patrick, go ahead. Maybe you can answer.
Well, sorry, I, you, you actually said exactly that. So the, the mix, the mix is different at every ratio. And again, the affordable, I guess it's, I mean, this is again, this is like our, our first uh, go-around with the regulation and, and the current format. It seems to indicate, and I think that's what Mr. Hasland's saying, is that the A H U, the affordable unit is required for all the units in there. However, when you read this, the next column regarding floor area, it says you get an additional thousand square feet per affordable unit. So it, it, it would seem to me that that may not be a requirement, but uh, again, uh.
May I, may I humbly suggest that we see if the drafter of that specific table recalls it in the time that it, and that you give the input to uh, Mr. Hasland once you've asked that person?
Right.
I think we need to go back and ask because
It, it makes no sense. Yeah.
It makes no sense.
25 or more or.
Yeah.
M I D and H A U.
And, and, and to be honest, Mr. Hasland, we were trying to get this done and I think we went too fast and we didn't proofread it carefully enough because it's not, I, I struggled over the weekend. I struggled yesterday and I'm struggling again now. So we better get you some clarity. I, because it does say A H U. I'm gonna reread it very carefully. I know you've been reading it carefully. I know Crystal has. Um, I and, okay, so here's the thing. If, if you have, uh, reading this, to me, it should be, once again, that you have to have one mid and two 80% AMIs. Is that, that's how we wrote it, right? So let's ask the person who wrote this table.
Uh, where did we get the, where, where are we getting the one mid from?
Because you've got, uh, be, well, because you've got a building with 17 units. And if you have four, so am I reading this wrong? Okay, I'm not gonna confuse anyone. I'm gonna stop. Let's ask the person who made this table. She's alive and well and has horses and pigs and something else. And let's just ask her to walk us through the rationale, unless, Patrick, you already have.
No, I mean, I, I haven't talked to her about it, but I, 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 the way that I recollect and I, I've read this.
A million times.
It's, it seems to me, and I think Mr. uh, Wells is, is making that same point, is that there should be a mid unit in here. And then everything else, if you want to have more um, square footage, that's where the A, the, the affordables get added in and.
That's how, that's how I remember us doing it. But I'm not sure I'm right. I think that you start out with a mid. But see, look at the 10 or fewer. That only has affordable units. So once we get to enough scale.
Right.
It's only state affordable units. And the reason is at the time we were, okay, I'm just gonna tell you guys how I remember this. At the time we were working on this, we knew about the original desegregate bill.
Right.
That had at 10 units, was looking to have at least one unit at, at state affordable. So that would, that, I'm totally clear on what's happening between a 10 or, a 10 units. Between 10 and whatever, five. Um, but I'm not following, again, why we drop the mid and, or should we, does that, I, I'm taking it. So now, I'll tell you guys the other thing. So desegregate, the bill um, that was the work, live, ride bill that was before us, just to give you an example, was only gonna have affordable units once you got over 10 units. So to be consistent with where that was trending, taking out the mid from that section would make sense. And so it would be 80%. Uh, Mr. Hasland, we would, I, I've got to go back and look at that because I don't know what that does to your economics and I believe that this is murky enough that it, 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 we have to be careful not to prejudice your plans by having had such a hard-to-understand regulation.
Well, Madam Chair, if I could just say one thing, I think what Mr. uh, Hasland's proposal, applicant's proposal is, is the most um, conservative or generous, the way you look at it, because all the units are going to be state median, right? Mr. Hasland.
Yes, and, and actually, I think it might be who my client to have the mix that you're talking about, the A H U and the mid. Uh, so. Um, I, I don't want to argue too strenuously about it. I just use.
We need clarity.
Yeah.
We just need to be clear. I agree. So where we, what we were looking at, Mr. Hasland, is exactly how you're interpreting it. We were very cognizant of the DSEG bill. And we were trying to figure out how to line up with it. And because we wanted to eventually be able to evolve to that. So it, I believe that your interpretation is correct and that there wouldn't be a mid there. What I'm not understanding and not remembering actually is why we then put the mid back in, in the next set.
And I don't recall, I mean, I attended all those workshops where you.
I know.
I think it was, uh, wasn't it, it had, I thought it had to do with volume. So if, if we, once we get up to a certain critical mass, um, then uh, then that, that mid could uh, come into it. Um, that was my kind of recollection.
But mid is, mid is more money. Mid is more income for them. So why would you give it, why would you raise their income stream when they've already got enough volume to be making money?
I, I think, or Mr. Low's right on, I think the, here we go, now I can highlight it. I think what this is really saying is the, to do um, the, the standard zoning for a, a moderate income unit or building is, is point 75. If you want to get up to the point nine, you need to start providing units at a, at a, at a rate that would get you up there. And so, affordable, I say again, I'm sorry.
I, I understood him to say that all of a sudden you're kicking, you kick mid back in at 25 or more because you, you can't because of the volume. And that, is that what you meant? I shouldn't talk for you.
You're talking to me now?
Yeah, that was a visitor, love, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I remember there, we had a real, we struggled with.
We struggled.
That lower number going, should it be four? Should it be five? And there was a disincentive built into that. So then essentially no one would, would do five if they could do four and get the M I D, right?
Right.
And, and then I thought there was some other um, is significant dichotomy between the, the 24 and then, and then uh, upwards beyond 25.
Let's just check it, because Katie should hopefully remember exactly what she did in the drafts. But you know, you don't know. She's been in California for a while. She may not. And then we're, we're stuck with just what we got in front of us.
But I think that additional, that bonus, so-called bonus, you know, the 1,000 square feet. Um, that was supposed to, that, that was supposed to, you know, the floodgates were gonna open. And, and here we are, several years down the road, and this is among our first.
Yeah, and, and I'm just gonna. Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Hasland, I, I, I believe that if you're doing, if you're at 80% of S M I, you're safe. Because that's what the table says.
Right.
So you're good.
I mean, sometimes if, if your table doesn't agree with your language and your regulation, that's one thing. And then that's, you can say, oh, that's wrong, table's wrong. But it, I read it that the table and the language matched up. But I think this is something we should talk about more because my client is texting me saying he did not understand this is a, a H U either. So we, I think you need to have a bigger discussion and thankfully this is now in a preliminary.
We'll check it, we'll check it.
Where did this, where did this, uh, one, I wonder what version of the, this table, this one is?
No, no, it's the, the one we approved.
It's, it's the last one, but your, your points were taken. It's how many, how many versions did we crumple up and, and get to this, right?
We changed it a whole bunch of times. And we struggled because um, the incentives, y'all wanted more incentives. So um, your client should, I mean, the way you've written the proposal, um, uh, Mr. Jacobson should know that it's, it is, um.
We'll talk.
Okay, I mean, Mr. Jacobson should know it's 80%. Because that's how you wrote it.
Right, it's not 60% and it's, it's not statewide, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. So I mean, he should know because that's how you drafted the proposal. That's what actually threw, threw off Mr. Wells is that you had some inconsistency in the proposal.
Uh, yeah, but I don't think there is based on the regulations in the chart, other than typo.
All right.
But.
Okay.
We can meet, I'm happy to set up something with Crystal and Pat. You want to sit with, in with us too and let's, let's talk through it. But. And I think that's partially where my client's coming from too, is that things change so much during. That period of time that you were redoing this and there were so many different tables that were generated.
I know.
You know, it's easy for, for all of us to be confused and.
Is this when I tell you we're about to change it again?
Yeah, I know. I know.
That's why it came into us now.
Just when you got used to it.
Yeah, no, before it gets more restrictive.
No, no, the state wants us to, I mean, there was a big motion for us to align to inclusionary zoning, the state statutes. Um, okay, Mr. Levy, I'm apologizing because you've been waiting patiently.
Oh, um. Uh, this, uh. Project reminds me of a foreign object. That has landed on this. Street. And there. I think. That. There are some concepts that. Should be applied to this project. And it has to do with. Uh, the. The mass, the bulk of a building and, and. Its proximity to the curb. Um, and. Relationship to, um. Its height. And I, I think that. It would be nice to see some deference to. The character of. The town, uh, this, this is, uh, foreign to the town and, um. Yeah, there's, there's materials. There's setbacks. Um, there's, um. Uh, just, uh, the. The punctuation of, of. Windows and, 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 uh, uh, retail versus, uh. A commercial. I mean, to, uh, residential, uh, it's, it's really, um. A project that, that has nothing to do with its proximity to the things around it. Uh, uh, and it backs up to, uh, a residential street. Uh, where there's a parking lot, um. Adjacent to the homes, uh, instead of, um. Some kind of response to it. There's a lot of, of detail, details here that. Could be addressed to soften it and make it feel like it belongs there.
Right. Peter, uh, A R C is going to be looking at this again, uh, I guess in their July meeting. They, their sentiment, it was exactly, pretty much exactly yours. Uh, there's a lot of things that in the building itself that need to be addressed. In terms of, um. It's very contemporary style. Um, you know, how does this fit in the context of the neighborhood, to the street, those kinds of things? Uh, you know, the landscaping in the front, there's a lot of things that they.
I mean, just, just the. Uh, the way it addresses the street with, with the terracing, uh, I mean, has. It, it sets itself apart. Um, it, it's a urban, extremely urban solution to.
Yeah.
Uh, our town.
Right. So I think what they're.
I think that there's so many little things that need to be addressed and I hope.
Do you wanna, um. Peter Levy, might you send a little memo, a little email, quick jot down your thoughts and send it to Patrick? Because that is, that is exactly, everything you're saying is what A R C raised. And if you could just jot it down, nothing fancy, just something quick. Um, the, uh, soften it, um, urban, too urban for you, you know, those kinds of things. Just send it to Patrick and. And he'll get it into Marissa and A R C. And then like, we could just, cause so it's more streamlined.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? No. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Okay. I unmuted Crystal a few times. I tried to get Crystal to unmute, but she didn't. Okay. Nobody from the public wants to speak, so we will. Continue this application. And, um, we will investigate, make sure we understand the evolution of that table. Um, for now I would go with exactly what is in there. But we'll, we'll make sure that we got it right. Cause we don't want to, and we thought it through a lot. Oh, Mr. LaRoe.
Madam Chair, are we planning on making motion preliminary or are you leaving it open for another? I'm just not clear.
I was leaving it open. I mean, do you care, Mr. Haslam?
Not dramatically, no.
I mean, the preliminary has no standing. You can just come in as a final if he wants, right?
Well, I guess what I'm asking is what follow-up do you expect before the applicant returns and, and we.
All the stuff that the applicant told us he was going to do anyway.
Uh, sewers, A R C, D P W, uh. Should I go on?
Yeah. I mean, he's got it. We could make the motion. Do you want us to make the motion?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, uh, leaving it open for slight progress, you know, may not be the, the best use of the commission's time. But also, you know, I don't think the applicant's intention is to have sewer and D P W addressed. Before the statutory timeline for the site plan application expires. So. I, I just want to, I mean, Chip, you can jump in, but.
Oh, well then we'll make a decision. We'll move you to final. So you've got the, the window starts again.
That may be a better choice than.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
I'm not going to be able to make the June twenty-first meeting too. So, um, I did not know that. Uh, Juneteenth was going to push that meeting to the Wednesday and unfortunately I, I made travel plans.
I'm glad you told us because I'm not sure, I hadn't focused on it.
Yeah.
Is that true?
We do. We have a Wednesday meeting.
Wednesday.
You gotta tell the commission this stuff because we'll fall asleep on you and not show up.
In my defense, Madam Chair, we do make this calendar a year in advance.
All right.
It, it was a good catch, Patrick.
All right. Um, does anybody object to closing the preliminary at this time? No objections. Therefore, the preliminary is closed and Mr. McRae, you're on.
Okay, uh, two eighty, two eighty-one, railroad avenue, uh, zero woodland drive, uh, P L P Z. Uh, twenty twenty-three, zero two-nine. Uh, applicant seeking, um. Preliminary site plan. And special permit for to construct a mixed use below market development, uh, four stories high, seventeen units, where three. Of the units would be below market rate. Uh, in construction of a, uh, parking area for forty-four vehicles. In the L B R and, um. No, just the L B R zone, right? Uh, R six, oh, R six and G V R six and P zone, right? Still part of a P zone. The, uh, whereas the, uh, commission, uh. Sees that the applicant has done a pre-application. As required for six, by six, one, ten. Uh, and it was heard on the. September ninth, two thousand twenty and September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant, uh. The, uh, commission finds that zoning issue to, um, comment from six, one. Uh, that it meets the B Z R. Engineering give us some, uh, comments on three sixteen. Uh, that the traffic is okay. Uh, and that, um. Drainage needs to be resubmitted prior to, uh, final site plan. Um, sewer division issued a comment, uh, on five, three. Um, with conditions concerning the private sewer lateral, uh, horse neck, uh, road can, uh. Um, horse neck road connection and offered solutions. Uh, the A R C looked at, at, uh, their five, four, two thousand twenty, uh, three meeting. And had significant notes, uh, for the applicant to address. E M A C had, uh, issued, uh, notes, uh, on two thirteen. Uh, from a narrative, uh, requesting, uh, issues and, uh. Providing comments for, uh, better energy use. Uh, see, therefore motion to, uh, move from preliminary to final. The applicant is to address, um. Address outstanding comments from, uh, engineering concerning drainage. Sewer concerning the sewer lateral and sewer connections. A R C. And any issues that E M A C has. And any conditions or in the departmental, uh, uh, comments that, uh, remain outstanding.
Does anybody want to add anything?
Well, I, I just, uh. Um, so as far as A R C is concerned. There is a lot of particulars that. I, I think that they should be addressing. And the question is, is A R C going to. Uh, look for all of these things. Um, I, I think that. Uh, I'm going to provide my own list.
Right. And that is, that's, that's the best way, Peter, is that. Um, your thoughts and if you have specific issues that you need them to address. That would be in your, uh, your memo or your brief. Things to look at. I, I think for, for me, um. Because the retail is actually set back from the edge of the facade. Um, it would be actually, how does their sign program work? Because. As we'd seen next door, um, in the retail on the opposite side of the street, it had same kind of condition. And they had this kind of willingly sign program that was kind of buried under, under the E veg. So that would be something on my list if I was going to be.
Yes. And, and you know, there's, there's lighting. You have this, uh, this retail above the street. Uh, the lighting has a completely different impact being above the street as opposed to be on the street. There's a lot of little things that.
Yeah. So just.
Just trying to, uh, understand. We don't really do pre-applications.
No, no, no. It's a, it's a preliminary, but that's okay.
We don't really do the preliminaries so much anymore. So, um, I'm just trying to, uh, put this all together. So, so.
You make that list.
Yeah.
And you send it to Patrick. And here's what we're working to do is to not catch the applicant in a ping pong game. Where we raise architectural issues and A R C raises them. So we feed them all into A R C. From us, but they are fed to A R C and then they act within their mandate. So that the applicant doesn't have to go back and forth and get caught, especially for the multifamily applications where we're really trying to get. The more cost effective for the applicants so that they could move forward with the affordability.
Right. And then so they'll come back with the final and.
Yeah.
And, uh. Madam Chair, what I'm hearing is you would like Mr. Levy's comments to be circulated to A R C as well.
Mr. Levy is going to send you an, an email and you are going to send it to Marissa who will share it with. A R C. Make sure that A R C is aware of the concerns that the commission had, but let, take it all through them. So we keep them in their mandate.
Understood.
And then we accept what their decision is to the extent that, uh, we can all muffle ourselves. All right. Um, okay. So, um, I think we've got the language in there. About A R C is reviewing. We've got all, we, I think you've got all, everything else. Does anybody want to add anything to Nick's motion? No. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Yeski.
Aye.
Lo.
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. Haslam. And Mr. Jacobson. And now, Mr. Basili, goodbye. So ends the public hearing.
Can we take a dinner break?
Yeah, you can take a dinner break and then you can come back. Okay. Anytime you want. Well.
Do we need six minutes also?
Yes, we're just getting rid of Basili.
Come back tomorrow.
All right. Okay. Before you, anybody jumps out, we have, um, we have Nick's minutes.
I can't make that motion.
Okay. So I will make the motion. I hereby move approval of the minutes. For January, for the following minutes from two thousand twenty-two, January twenty, February fifteen, March one and March fifteen. Do I have a second? Mr. Levy has seconded. McRae can vote, right? McRae.
Aye.
Lo.
Aye.
Yeski.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. We're going to be done with these like in another six meetings.
Yeah.
All right.
The world of post-COVID.
All right. Um, tomorrow, everybody's got to, you know, figure out what you want to do with six ninety-nine and then we'll jump. Um, it's still at five. I have to jump at six, but, um. You know, whatever. But.
It's at five o'clock, right? Yeah.
Five o'clock we'll start and, and like I said, I, I, we have, uh. I circulated a draft. Uh, thank you, Mr. Low for pointing out the, uh, typos. Uh, I'll, I'll resend it with those fixed.
God, I love the good typo finders. It's so great.
No, I appreciate them very much.
Really great.
Um, and then we all have.
Unique skill.
We'll have some poignant conversations about the direction that the, the ordinance needs to go in you, in your mind. So, thank you.
All right, you guys. Uh, talk to everybody tomorrow. Those of you who can make it.
Sorry, we didn't make it to the seven o'clock hour, guys.
Yeah, we're sorry. But you can all go lunch break now, dinner break.
Five forty-six. See you.
Thank you all.
Good night all.
Good night.